Moving on to R4, discuss ballot overspray issues with representatives from Runbeck, who are not here, Election Services, and Hart Inner Civic impacting November 5th, 2024 presidential general election, and consider providing direction to staff sponsored by Supervisor Jones. Supervisor Jones, open us up. Just to give everyone a heads up, as you're preparing, you'll have two minutes for public comment on this item. Supervisor Jones.
All right. Thank you, Chair. And so obviously, everybody knows we've had a problem with the ballots that were produced by Runbeck. There is a barcode on the side, and it appears that on maybe half of the ballots, the barcode cannot be scanned by our Canon DRG 2140 electronic scanners. The process that is being used is that we attempt to scan them, and then they're separated from those that can be scanned and those that cannot. Then, those that cannot are moved across the hallway. Runbeck has brought in another, yet another scanner, which I do not know. Those are scanned, and it's created an electronic image of that original ballot.
You don't know the model number?
I don't know what machine, brand, or model of that electronic scanner. I think they brought in three machines, I think some printing machines and one electronic scanner. I'm familiar with the Canon scanners that we have purchased. Those are set up on a duplication stage behind a door with a window. There's duplication station 1, 2, 3, or 1, 2, 3, and 4. There's two people per station. So as that image comes up, there is the original electronic image, and then a different image. That different image is a computer-generated image that's supposed to be a mirror image of what occurred on the front. On election day, I went down at approximately 10:30 and watched the duplication process for two minutes. In that two-minute time period, I saw two times where the image of the original ballot was not transferred over correctly, and they left off a race on two different ballots. The observers there, the county employees, they saw the same error as I did. They corrected that error. In two minutes, I saw two errors. And eventually went home not thinking too much, went on back to work. Later that day, however, approximately 3:30, I called our CEO up and said, "Dave, I think I'd like to show you something down at the ROV." So he politely came down, and within a short amount of time, he too witnessed the same problem on duplicator number four, which really was at that time the only one that I could have meaningful observation. Duplicator 1 and 2 are too far away, I cannot see those. Duplicator 4 and 3, I can. I could see 4 most of the time, 3 some of the time. And so consistently, what the pattern that I saw, the failure of that scanning process was that when you had an X, or a check, or a scribble, it wouldn't pick those up at all ever. And the election official would have to change that entire ballot to match what the legal marks on the original ballot were. And then about half the time, a very filled-in mark was not picked up by this process. And every time I saw the error, so did an election worker there. So they were correcting the errors. The errors were happening routinely, sometimes one a minute, sometimes one or two in five minutes. I could not see a pattern because I'm at such a distance, I can't see necessarily what proposition or what race it is. I've gone back many times. I have been able now to observe, the last time I went back to observe, duplicator 4 was not on, but duplicator 3 was on, and again, within a couple minutes, I saw two ballots where the votes did not register on various races or propositions. Again, I can't tell because I'm looking at an angle. But clearly, errors were being made routinely. The concern I have here with Runbeck is not only with the ballot overspray issue and the cost associated with that, the time that is taken with that, but also with this machine they brought out. I do not know if it's a certified machine that's approved for here in California. It had a vast number of errors, which is forcing our county employees to correct those errors. And when you're talking about two ballots, front and side, front and back, you're talking approximately 150,000 images that our county employees are going to have to look at, and possibly as many as half of those they're going to have to correct. This presents a big problem. This system is not working correctly. We're missing, the Runbeck system is missing a lot of these races, and I cannot tell because of lack of meaningful observation if there's much of a pattern to it. It could be possibly for certain races, which would be very alarming. It may not be, but without meaningful observation, I am left in the dark. When our CEO was there, I explained to him that both in the Bat Cave with our electronic scanners, that I can only have meaningful observation on one of the electronic scanners. The other three are out of my reach, I can't see them. And I've watched for hours that particular scanner. And it's great to be able to watch those ballots go through, you get to see patterns, you get to see things that you otherwise wouldn't be able to see. And you know, that's what this election, I thought, was all supposed to be about, is transparency. That's the one thing that is required by law that we can easily do, is get these machines in an area where we can easily see them, and not hold observers like myself in a distance as if we're some sort of evil people. We're trying to have meaningful observation. Separate from the Runbeck issue, I saw ballots this last time that I went down in the break room, being counted in the break room, which is very concerning because there's no observation in the break room. That's a separate issue. You know, again, Runbeck should have been here to answer these questions specifically for me with the duplication process, because I saw it. And everybody that watched it, if you took the time to really watch what was happening, you would see these errors come up. And again, I'm going to do the same thing on this chair. I'm going to recommend that we send a letter off to the U.S. Department of Justice to investigate this. And I put that into a motion to bring it back.
Motion, seconded by Supervisor Kelstrom. ROV Toller, would you like to speak briefly on, or as long as you want, on the overspray issue? One of the issues, as this agenda item is stated, one of the things, you don't have to talk about it now, but I would let the public know. I know we've already spoken about this at length, and I'm, you know, someone's going to pay for this, whether it's Hart or whether it's Runbeck. It's not our fault. We've had, I know our auditor controller, Noel DeShaw, who's been in the Bat Cave for hours, many people have had to pitch in, many of the CEO's office staff, so thank you to all of them who have spent a lot of time, but it has come at a great county cost to facilitate this, and we're still very behind, not at your guys' fault.
Correct. I'll touch on that briefly first. The solution that we've chosen is a very labor-intensive one. And it's only because my staff has worked long hours. This week, they've been working from 7:00 to 7:00 each day. It's only because the county has very generously provided some very excellent volunteers, some of whom have grasped the process very quickly. And we're using a buddy system where people are returning so that anyone who's new is paired with someone who's done it, and we cut down on our training and the reduplication of, you know, see, show, tell, and that helps. But the duplication process has been a bottleneck. We've been managing something on the order of about 6,000 ballots a day, and so our ordinary tabulator can process many more than that in the same amount of time. And we're trying to pace the flow so that we don't have other staff sitting around waiting while ballots are duplicated. Now, with respect to the duplication process, I generally concur with the first part of it, as described by Supervisor Jones. But the second part, where he refers to an error, and seeing errors as frequently as one or two a minute, or several, those are not errors. The system is designed to catch those. And perhaps the best way to explain that is to set it against the ordinary way that we tabulate ballots. Had this problem not cropped up, ballots would have been fed into the Hart Inner Civic tabulator, and they would be inserted, and certain ballots would be kicked out for any number of reasons. If they had a coffee stain on them, if they had extraneous writing on them, or in particular, if they had been marked not according to the instructions which are on every ballot Shasta County produces. It's clear that voters are meant to fill in the box, but some people put a thin check mark, or a thin X, or a small circle, or any other number of designations. And those ballots are routinely kicked out of the scanners in the Bat Cave, not because of a barcode issue, but because they're marked improperly. And the same thing is happening in the duplication process. If it's marked improperly, the other duplicate ballot can't be created exactly. And so the individuals that are working two by two next to each other are trained to substitute their judgment. Now, in the ordinary course, what happens is we put ballots through until we get 100% match. Only when it's 100% are they saved to the central processor, and it's not an issue. But in the duplication process, there's no mark on the duplicate ballot. So the adjudicator, the human person, has to actively press the screen to fill in the duplicate ballot. When they do that, they're ascertaining the voter's intent. Now, they can see that it's an X, or a slash, or a small circle, and when there's one in one box, they know what the voter's intent is, and they supply it by touching the box on the duplicate ballot, and it fills it in perfectly. It's a perfect black square. Where it gets tricky is when there's an overcount. That's where someone's voted for two candidates. We sometimes see voters will vote, and then they've decided, "No, that's not what I meant to do." They'll fill in a second box, and then they'll indicate somehow. They'll cross off a name, or they'll circle the name of the person they want, or they'll say, "This one." Somehow, they're indicating their intent. Whenever a voter indicates their intent, the human adjudicator follows that intent and checks only the box that was intended. But if there's no way to determine that intent, if there's no crossing off, if there's no circling, if the two are marked, and there's no way to distinguish between the two of them, what the voter really intended, then the adjudicator never puts themselves in the mind of the voter. They never substitute their judgment for the voter's judgment. In that case, they overvoted. They touched both of the boxes. In a similar manner, if they see an undercount, so the voter hasn't chosen a candidate in a particular race, all the boxes are empty, then the adjudicator, the human, leaves all the boxes empty. They're ensuring 100% accuracy in the duplication of that ballot. Now, it doesn't just stop there. At that point, once the two ballots are verified by the two people to be exactly the same, they're printed. So in that duplication room, you have one scanner and two printers. The ballots are printed, they go to a third person, who basically physically scans both ballots, looking at each of the marks on them. And only after that third person has verified that the ballots match 100%, are they then remarried together and taken over to the tabulator, the Hart Inner Civic tabulator, to be counted. In that process, when the two ballots are being created, the voter's ballot and the duplicative ballot, they're each assigned a unique number. It's the same number on each, and those two are married together, and we can always identify those ballots. We can always prove that those ballots are marked 100% exactly the same. If there were to be a recount, we actually by law have to use the original ballot that the voter voted. Even though it couldn't be scanned, it can be used in the recount tally, okay? If there's ever a court challenge to the election or the duplication process, we can produce both of those ballots, the original voter's ballot and the duplicated ballot, with their unique identification number, and show that they're exactly the same. So I do take exception to the characterization of what's coming out of the scanner as an error. It's not an error, it's what's intended, and it's the prompt for human adjudication. It's the prompt for the person looking at those ballots to appropriately mark them to ensure that they're 100% the same. Now, again, all of that takes time, a lot of time, and a lot of staff. And I absolutely concur that Hart and Runbeck have to be bearing the cost for this. I will say this, I know the problem at least involves Runbeck, because from a matter of serendipity, one of my staff is married to a scientist with access to a scanning microscope. And he took his ballot and her ballot, and scanned them in the microscope, and photographed them. And I've seen a picture of that ballot, and it's very clear at the magnification he used that the black dots of ink infiltrate the white bars of the barcodes. So there's absolutely a print anomaly which makes those barcodes unreadable by the Hart Inner Civic machine. What's unknown at this stage is what role Hart plays, how the two act in concert to prevent the scanning of the ballot. And of course, I'm disappointed that they're not here to help us explain that tonight. I agree that they should be made to. It's my understanding that the Secretary of State has essentially demanded of them that they're both on the hook for testing and writing white papers to explain what happened. And that's because this didn't just happen in Shasta County, it happened in Nevada County as well, and it may have happened elsewhere. I haven't any concrete proof of that in California. I've heard anecdotally of a couple other states that had problems. But that in a nutshell is the duplication process, and it will end up being a very expensive one. But I will say this, it will end up being the most fair, accurate election I've ever seen in my life, because I've got at least nine extra set of eyes on half of the ballots that were voted. And that's completely unusual. That's going above and beyond to establish the accuracy of our ballots. And as I promised when this process began, I am putting accuracy far above efficiency. I realize that this will slow the process down and cost more, but accuracy has to be fundamental at this point. I'm also confident that given the pace with which we're duplicating the ballots, and the way that my staff is working diligently to process the ballots, we will be able to complete the process and certify the election well within the deadline. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
What I'd like to do, Supervisor Jones, and then before we ask any questions, Supervisor, or ROV Toller, I'd like to get the public comment.
I just did that one.
Supervisor Jones.
With all due respect, ROV Toller, I went down there 10 times to watch the duplication process, and what you're saying is not true. So every time, every time there was an X, or a check, or a scribble, those were not scanned. That part, what you said, is 100% true. At any time when somebody put an X, or a check, or a scribble, they didn't pick those up. But half the other time, the boxes were filled in completely, and they were being missed, and many other people observed that, including our CEO. He saw that same system. They weren't picking it up at least 50% of the time. Every mark that was a light mark, they did not pick up. That's true. And every time I saw that, one of our workers did correct it. My issue here is when there were completely marked in boxes, some of those boxes were not being scanned over on. And to say that they were light marks, they were not. They were completely filled in, and they were missing. And if you ask your election officials, they will confirm that. They will confirm that.
All right. Well, I apologize for that oversight, but I think the good news is, as you yourself noted, in every case, that was caught and corrected by the people in the duplication process.
They did. Just my concern is, as you know, they're going to have to look at 150,000 images. It's a lot of work. And you still have one person doing a task, and that's fraught with errors. That is just, it's just, it's, the system that they have with Runbeck is a very poor system, and to compound, they're not getting all the marks over there, making it harder for them. And so the trust in that is low.
Supervisor Jones, can we take public comment? Thank you, ROV Toller.
Thank you.
And yeah, and I will say, I will say one quick thing about the observation. I did liken the elections office, because I know Assistant ROV, Franciscan, has talked extensively about Santa Cruz and how they have the big glass boxes, and I think that's great. You know, I liken our current elections office there on market, like trying to play basketball with 18-foot ceilings. Like you can shoot layups, but you can't shoot outside. It's not optimal. Can you do it? Sure, but it's not remotely optimal. And I think that office is not remotely optimal for the observation we would like. I agree, it needs to be more meaningful, but to duplicate 100, or you know, close to 60,000 ballots in a room, you know, that's tough. But anyway, we'll take public comment. And I do think this is an important issue to bring up, because it's not like we're the only county in the country discussing these very things. We're not even the only one in California talking about it. Up first, Laura Hobbs, followed by Dan, followed by Thomas H., followed by Antonia. If you could please get in queue, I would appreciate it. And I do appreciate everybody that's come out tonight. See a lot of new faces, and I think that's great.
Okay, so spitting out one out of every two ballots being rejected, in order to pass the Secretary of Voting System standard, they must have an error rate of less than .008%. We have an error rate of 50%. Okay, if it's not able to read the ballot, that's an error. I don't care what anybody says, that is an error. The county has refused to give us meaningful observation during the logic and accuracy testing. They didn't allow us to see the hand count, nor did they allow us to see the final report from the logic and accuracy test. Despite having promised on more than one occasion that I would be given this access to the report, I was denied a public records request. The last press conference, Thomas Toller said that this was not the appropriate time to release the logic and accuracy test. For goodness sake, we have a 50% error rate. How bad does it have to get before we can have access to the logic and accuracy test? We must have the audit logs for both the Hart machines and the Runbeck NOVIS system, but Thomas Toller has vowed that he would not share this information with us. How can we have confidence in this election if we're not allowed these basic auditing, auditing information for the public to look at? And the way Shasta County has handled this whole debacle is not right. The observers are not being allowed meaningful observation, they are not allowed to look over the shoulders of election workers who are ascertaining the will of the voters, and they're, they're not allowed to. In Shasta County, they can. They can actually go in the room and look over the shoulders of the workers. Here, we have people doing the final QC check, and teams of one. They're sitting there, eyes glazing over, all by themselves in a break room where nobody can get in there and see them, despite the fact that there's plenty of room for people to look over their shoulders. We are being denied access, and that's not right. This is not fair. This is not transparent. We need to go to Hand County.
Dan, Thomas H., Antonia, and then Casey?
Yeah, the gals in the break room are still using the break room tables. They're spread out all over the place with bins and ballots.
We got to say the overspray.
The overspray issue is a huge issue. What he's doing is, why are we not just hand counting these? You can't duplicate the things. As you get that spray getting on there, just, people can visualize it. As he said, they can adjudicate them very quickly. Just do the hand count, stop the menace of the duplication. The duplication process is not legal. You got to have two eyes on every ballot, and you don't. You have two eyes on two ballots looking at one screen. That's not two eyes on each ballot. So you got half the number of people looking at those ballots. There's no checking balance. One guy reads it, the other person's looking at the other one reading it. There's no, they're not checking each other. That's why we have two eyes in every ballot when it's supposed to be counted. Making duplicates, you're telling us that nobody was disenfranchised this vote. When they're still over there opening ballots, hundreds of ballots today, taking them out of the envelope, those people's ballots haven't been counted, but we've called all these races, although we've got ties. Why are we not looking at the issue of doing a hand count instead of worrying about this? Back to the ink thing, is that you, Shasta can't pay for this. It's got to be, Runbeck and Hart got to battle it out, but that is not our problem. They've got to pay for that. But we got to get it fixed, and the way we're fixing it, we are not addressing the issue over there at the ROV office right now. So thank you.
Thank you. Thomas H., followed by Antonia, followed by Casey, followed by Bev.
Thanks, Mr. Jones. Yeah, I've seen the box filled in completely on the duplicate, the ones they're duplicating, and it didn't pick up on the one they're taking a picture of. So they fill in the box. It was completely filled in, I've seen it more than once. Now, if I see that, there's no place to raise your hand, there's no number to write down, I've just seen it, that's all I can say. It's behind the door, you can't raise your hand, or he'll throw you out, or anything. You have to take their word for it. You notice on that side, there's no people like me over there working. Mr. Toller, he wrote me a letter that I'm ineligible. Hey, you're not good enough, or, he actually put it in writing. But anyway, I don't see very many people on my side over there counting the votes. And again, he's got this law of two. Well, they go into the lunchroom now with a stack of ballots come out by themselves, go in there and change them, nobody wants them, but he's got the law of two. I asked the guy, "What about the law of two?" And Joanna jumped on me about asking questions. So it's not upfront, really, it's not. Chris, it's not upfront. Get your ass out there and look at it, it's not upfront. You have two people, two humans, that are saying yes, and we've got to take their word for it. That's how they do their hand count. I once watched their proposed hand count, I never once seen a ballot, but I watched two people say, tell me what it was. Now, is that upfront? It's like having something here in my hands, and you take my word for it. I mean, that's not right.
Thank you. Antonia, Bev, or Casey, followed by Bev. I don't see Casey, so Bev. After Bev is Christian. If you can please get in queue, I'd appreciate it. Margaret Hansen to follow Christian.
I've been tracking the problems with the overspray ballots at the ROV. I believe the rejection rate is worse than indicated, but we won't know for sure until we can do a total, analyze the data. When all ballots processing is completed, the public should be given totals and percentages of only million ballots. If the precinct ballots are included, the rejected percentage will appear to be less, and that would be not transparency. Below is a few of the batches that I tracked on November 1st. It's just three random. Okay, out of 50 total, nine were successful, 41 rejected. 50 total, five successful, 45 rejected. 50 total, five successful, and 44 rejected. That doesn't even equal 50, okay? The Runbeck machines that were bought up here to Shasta County, were they certified after they were installed here? Movement can make it uncertifiable, just like if you move a refrigerator, when you move, might be working when you move it out, but it might not work when you move it back in. And I also want to point out that the people that were served the C Stand Assist letters, sponsored by New, State of New California, have issued a second notice. Thank you. Thank you.
Christian, thanks for getting the queue. Margaret, followed by Patty Plum, followed by Lori Bridgford.
So yeah, take them to court. Yeah, the defective product, you got a capable lawyer over there. Go for it. I fully recognize that. Go ahead, write that letter to, to the Attorney General. By the way, Mr. Jones, don't throw it in the trash. You know. Listen, we, we can sit and talk about overspraying. Boy, we're overspraying here. And the fact of the matter is, the conspiracy theory tinfoil hatters will never be satisfied, ever. And we're never gonna have a state of Jefferson. I hate to say it, but it's not gonna be the state of Jefferson. We are going to be a charter county in some degree.
Our four, please.
However, the state and Mr. Toller has specific programs and policies and procedures to deal with these issues. And I fully, I think, instead of criticizing our ROV and trying to figure out a way to kick them under a very tough job, you ought to be actually congratulating all of the staff down there for doing the excellent work that they're doing, under pressure. And I fully believe that the ROV is accurate in saying that this is gonna be found to be a very well-tabulated and observed election. And if you don't think so, ask for the recall. But once again, Mr. Jones, you're never gonna be satisfied, period. Half the people in this audience are gonna be satisfied, period. If you hadn't wasted millions of dollars to begin with, we wouldn't be here today.
Margaret, followed by Patty Plum, followed by Lori Bridgford, followed by Dolores.
Okay, I am speaking on my own behalf, not speaking for anybody else, by the way. The questions about this overspray really concern me as a voter. And here's a few of the questions. I have about 500, but I'll just stick to about three or four. Was this done on purpose? Why wasn't the overspray detected with the ballots before they were sent to us by Runbeck? Where was the quality control from Runbeck? And the people need answers, and that's all that we're asking for. So thank you.
Thank you. Patty Plum, followed by Lori Bridgford, followed by Dolores, followed by Deidre Holliday.
I am speaking as a public citizen, not as a commissioner. And I want to say that I can verify what we saw in the limbo room is where Patrick and CEO Rickard were observing. And that's what we've been doing from 7:00 in the morning until 7:00 at night, observing and covering all that we can to see what we see. And it is bottleneck. You're right, it is a cluster. It's quite a mess up there. And what I'm observing coming over on the monitors is duplications that are being rejected. Why would duplications be rejected? I'm watching adjudications. I'm watching the person choose, make the choice. And I'm looking, and they're making the wrong choice right in front of my eyes. I had people behind me watching me going, did you see that? And it happened so fast. Everything happens so fast. We feel like we're on the Lucy and Ethel show with the chocolate's coming past us and we're sticking them in our shirt and our mouth, and we can't catch them fast enough. You got the visual, that's exactly how we feel. And we feel like the cameras are laughing at us too. But it is legitimate what we're doing. We are watching things that don't make any sense. So tell me why we have so many ballots to count and we send our Assistant ROV to Nevada County? Why does that happen? Why on Monday, we show up to stay there until 7 o'clock for observation, and we're told that most of the staff is going home at 3:30? Why did that happen? And they said, you can go ahead and go too, because no one's really gonna be here. We're just gonna be cleaning up for tomorrow. Cleaning up what? I don't see any buckets. And we stayed until 7 o'clock and watched what we, boy, did we see stuff. We go in the limbo room, and Anna and Nick are in there. And Anna's writing on a ballot, and we're like, what's she writing on a ballot? And Joanna is telling us spaghetti answers that don't make any sense at all. And we're writing everything down we possibly can. Let me tell you, nothing is transparent. It should not be certified. What we have seen is legitimate, and this, this can't be certified. I'm just saying that right now.
Lori Bridgford, followed by Dolores, followed by Deidre, followed by Jenny.
Thank you. I see two minutes for this R4. I've all along had issues and concerns with Joanna Frescat physically going to Nevada County on an overspray issue and what more. She should have already delivered everyone a report of what happened, how long, who did she meet with? Was this a cover-up? Was this a distraction? This is absolutely ridiculous. And she's on the clock, and all the other people that are coming from other departments that were voluntold. I would like to know the loss of what Nolda Short was doing and anybody else. Those are costs. Get your calculators up, because Runbeck needs to get the bill for every penny of these problems. So this has not been transparent. The duplication process alone, the getting the new room is slower. Agreed, you can't see anything, you can't hear anything. I had to beg to get a chair for 45 minutes from an ex-employee who then left on November 1st, saying he doesn't care. I mean, he's even throwing, I think, Mr. Toller under the bus, according to the Tuesday night radio show, Shasta Unmasked. I took notes, and there's some horrible problems. So anyway, be careful of lawsuits from disgruntled employees that are trying to do a setup. I've said this a couple times with some people that are already in this room. So correctly done ballots are being kicked out. What is so hard to understand that when there's multiple people seeing this issue and concern? Absolutely, this is, I'm so disturbed that they couldn't even send, meaning Runbeck or Hart, a memo. Not one thing. I have 27 seconds? I just heard it beep. Okay, so massive problems. I wish people would pay attention. And just because they just can't face reality isn't gonna work. Thank you.
Dolores, Deidre Holliday, followed by Jenny.
Yeah, I'm so sick of these people. They're always coming up and repeating themselves. They sound like a broken record. Regarding the overspray, you know, it is, it's not some, the way Mr. Toller explained it, didn't you guys hear the facts? I mean, what is it gonna take for these people? It's not about just these people. This is about the whole county. It's not about just pleasing these darn people. Most of these people are liars who come up here and just say lies. They want transparency, but yet, they're the ones who committing lies and committing crimes. And like Laura Hub, fraud, she's committing fraud. She hacked a computer. How many times have we heard her say fraud? How many times? How many computers do we all have? Have you ever seen a computer go off in the middle of the night updating? And, and you're talking about overspraying? Okay, well, that's the same thing. They make these computers a certain way because I was in printing for 20 years. So I know about printing. I know about these kind of things. For, for these people, some of these people don't even have the experience to be talking. Oh, they can't, we can't see. Oh, the cameras, we can't see what they're doing. Oh my gosh, do you sound, I mean, they sound ridiculous. They have no experience. Why are we listening to this? We got Mr. Toller, who has experience. I mean, as a lawyer, that's what you want, is someone you can trust. He's giving you the, your, everything you need to hear what's going on. He's being transparent. How much more are you gonna ask from this person? He's not gonna jeopardize his license for overspraying? You think he's cheating somehow? Oh my gosh.
Deidre Holliday, followed by Jenny, followed by Benjamin, followed by Darren.
We're all going to jail.
Good evening, Board, Supervisors, Staff, and Audience. I'd like to share with you that when the ROV had an open house for election vendors to show us their machines around March 2023, the Dominion spokesperson assured me that we are in the strictest state with regard to testing and certification. When I expressed concern about the machines being connected to the internet, she unequivocally, adamantly, and sternly told me that their machines had no connection to the internet in California. It's common knowledge now that the voting machines do connect to the internet, and I haven't heard any of the companies admit to that or apologize for the misinformation, whether it was a matter of dishonesty or ignorance. The habitual doubling down on the part of people who are leading us astray with regard to election integrity when a piece of truth hits daylight has become for me a sign, not only that we are on the right track, but there is no change of heart among them on the horizon. Unfortunately, I for one would listen to the Runbeck and Hart reps whenever they show up through the unfortunate lens of distrust based on the bad rap voting machines have earned. Please be circumspect when making decisions based on their presentation, if they ever give one.
Thank you. Jenny, followed by Benjamin, followed by Darren, followed by Jim Burnett.
Hello. There are five counties that use Hart machines, and only two of them use Runbeck, which would be Shasta County and Nevada County, which would indicate that the problem is neither Hart nor Runbeck when you use them together. When it comes to the duplication process, people who are up here speaking about it probably should have watched it a lot more than they watched those two screens and jotted down numbers, because there's more to the process than that one screen. And there's more to learn than the one screen you're looking at of the four. The duplication process is an interesting process, and I watched it and heard them do it. And before you talk about how only one person saw each ballot, not only do they mark the ballot, but then it goes back through, and a separate set of eyes looks over the ballots once they've been marked. You can go ahead and look at it before they press save. See, because what they do is they run it through, right? They run it through the duplication process. Then it comes back onto someone else's screen. Those next two people look it over. They read it to each other to make sure it's accurate, and then press save. So that is four sets of eyes on one ballot. When it comes to watching the process, you should watch the whole process. Do you know how many times I heard people ask observers what's happening, to which the answer was, well, I'm not really sure because I don't know the whole process? And I was there to hear that. So I watched all of the process, not just one small piece I was interested in, but the whole process. And spreading lies and rumors is not the way to make people trust government or how it runs.
Benjamin, followed by Darren, followed by Jim Burnett, followed by Terry. That is our last speaker, then we'll bring it back for board discussion.
Let's talk about Runbeck and Hart intercivic with the overspray issue. This goes back to 2023, when the board majority voted 3-2 to remove Dominion machines based on unfounded claims of voter fraud. Now ironically, this decision led us to the challenges we now face. To further that irony, Supervisor Cry simultaneously says he saved us money with Hart, then that the overspray issue cost us money. Okay. Honestly, I'm glad we found something wrong with an election, finally. It was getting tiring constantly hearing Chicken Little. However, if we just wrote out our original contract, this wouldn't have happened. Dominion voting machines, their scanners are not that sensitive. Now, not only that, mistakes do happen, and it sounds like Hart was very responsive to finding a solution. If anything, this whole process proves how resilient the process is. And we get it. The core issue isn't Hart's machines, but the ballots themselves produced by Runbeck. However, these ballots reportedly only face reading errors with Hart equipment. This distinction is crucial for the understanding where the problem lies. It should also be noted that Jones said that looking at so many images of ballots would lead to errors. Now, that's astonishing. Patrick, how can you with a straight face advocate for hand counting 46,000 ballots when the process being done right now has us doing half that? By your own logic, you're advocating for a less transparent method because with your hand counting paper ballots, those errors won't be caught by anybody. So this just continues the narrative of questioning election integrity, but we must be clear in what serves the communities best. Are we aiming for solutions that truly improve our elections or perpetuating doubt without solid ground?
Darren Hale, followed by Jim Burnett, followed by Terry.
Hello, first I want to thank Mr. Toller and his crew over at ROV. They're doing a fantastic job. I was treated with absolute respect and kindness by his staff. I appreciate the work. This morning, I wrote you guys an email, and I'd like to read it here before public. First off, let me thank you for all serving our county well. I know there are disagreements on this current board, but I find that to lead to a healthy dialogue. It gives the people a window into the thoughts and actions each member has regarding the agenda items that come before you. This way, the people have the best information to come to their own conclusions. As you may be aware, I am running for Anderson City Council, and I currently have a comfortable lead among other three candidates. However, I do have grave concerns about the rejection rate of these Runbeck ballots. I spent the evening on the 11th at the ROV observing this process. I will have to say that staff truly are doing the best they can with the tools that they have. The process in which they remedy the rejected ballots is quite complex. It is this complexity that has me concerned. From the sorting of ballots to scanning of the ballots, to the rejection of ballots, to the shifting through of the rejected ballots, to the reprint of ballots, and finally back to re-scan the ballots, this process compounds the possibility of potential error. Let me be clear, I do not believe that there is any cheating or anything nefarious happening with any staff. However, I do not have confidence in the accuracy of this process. It is because of these concerns, and I think it's safe to say, as councilmen-elect, I am formally requesting a hand count of every ballot. Thank you for your time.
Jim Burnett, followed by Terry.
Good evening again. Yeah, I want to thank Tom Toller and his staff, because there's a lot of observers there, and you guys show us a lot of courtesy, respect, and kindness. And I really appreciate that. I also appreciate Mr. Toller's saying that he is championing accuracy over efficiency during this time of chaos. And that's precisely the point that a lot of us have been saying. Accuracy over efficiency has always been the hallmark of people that want hand-counted ballots. All of this mitigation is wonderful, but guess what we have to go to? We have to go to teams of two people, three teams, eyes on all ballots, empirical evidence, something you don't get with black box proprietary software adjudicating our ballots. That'll never happen as long as things are proprietary. So the only option I can see is accuracy over efficiency, hand counting the ballots. We need to get back to that, and the sooner the better. This is something we need to do for this election. We're kind of doing it, but why not just go whole hog and forget the scanning and the duplication and just set it up? Set it up, let's do it, and show the world we can. Thank you.
Terry, and this is our last speaker, then we'll bring it back for board discussion.
Yeah, I kind of like what Darren and Jim just said. I kind of miss the hanging chat at this point. When, I mean, if everything is so arduous, why are we doing it that way? The third sentence of the Constitution of the United States specifically says that the people shall elect their representatives every two years. It doesn't say how. If in fact, we have something that's so arduous that no one can understand it, no one can do it, we can't get people to even figure out how to do this system, it still doesn't supersede the fact that our votes need to be counted. We need to hand count, period. In this sentence, we need to hand count. I asked the Assistant Secretary of State, after she made the comment that the machines are infallible. People make mistakes. And I said, okay, well, I guess that means that people that are fallible created an infallible machine. Is that what you're trying to tell me? And if that's the case, then why do we have hand counts as a recount? The whole thing is pretty ridiculous. I mean, I'm sure Mr. Toller feels that he's in a very precarious situation. I don't envy him. I don't envy his staff. I'm not saying that there isn't some things that are nefarious that are going on there. The only reason the public doesn't have the knowledge is because they haven't been told, because there isn't enough transparency. The deal is, we just need to hand count them, period. Because the Constitution of the United States, according to the California Constitution, supersedes everything. And I'm glad that Mr. Gardner thinks this is funny, but hey, you know, I do appreciate you being the only spawn of Tiny Tim.
All right, so we're getting back to the board discussion. So we have a, we have a motion, we have a second. Any other board discussion as it relates to this? I will ask Mr. Toller, if you don't mind really quick, the... I will ask Mr. Toller, if you don't mind, really quick, the, does that request from Runbeck, because I know Ms. Short being here, which is great, not necessarily just being here, but spending the time she has, her rate is gonna be just a fraction higher than minimum wage, and she's gonna make sure she knows every dollar that's allocated in this process is paid back. And I do want to make sure that, that this board is made aware very clearly of when that's coming back with Runbeck, and who is gonna be accountable for paying the county back for that. So I don't, if you can articulate that just publicly to CEO Rickard, so I know.
I can tell you that we worked very closely with the Otter's Office to provide the project codes specifically to elections and to this duplication process for the county workers who were volunteering, and so we will have a...
Well, I want to clarify, volunteering in terms of trading one job for another?
Correct.
It wasn't, they were coming in on the day off?
No, it's not that they're doing this for free either, it's, we will know what their time involvement was and what the cost was. It's being billed as an election item, so I have every incentive to recover that cost from Runbeck and Hart, because it's my budget that's gonna take the hit.
And that's all, I just wanted to make sure we just publicly got it, so you guys are working on that. Okay, Ms. Blankenship.
Yes, Chair, just to be clear, can I have the maker of the motion?
Motion was Supervisor Jones, second was Supervisor Kelstrom.
Yes, but can they please restate the motion?
Yes, I'll send a letter.
So, to bring this back, because there's no vote today, actually, it's a simple majority vote, to write a letter and forward it on to the US Department of Justice to look into this, this matter with Runbeck, the overspray, and the duplication process.
Thank you, and to be clear, this is...
There is a simple majority vote on this one.
Yeah, he goes, no.
I would like, I'd like, because it involves elections, and there were special elections involved, I'd like it to go to the US Department of Justice.
Okay, so that's the motion. Supervisor Garment.
I just had a couple of questions for Mr. Toller. Oh, back up, sorry, sir.
Get my exercise.
There you go. First of all, did your staff work on Monday, which was a holiday?
They did, yes.
Thank you. I just, you guys have worked so hard, this whole process, it's not been easy. And I just want to say, you've explained things very clearly, very easy to understand, and I appreciate the effort and the time you put into this. I don't, I'm not against looking into this a little further, I just, I would, I would like to definitely know where you're at with, have you had conversations with Hart or Runbeck about the dollars down the line that are gonna need to reimburse us?
I would say we've had better communications with Runbeck. They obviously were very quick to provide equipment to us and technical expertise. When the subject of reimbursement has come up, they've never shied from it. Hart has been a little less cooperative, in my opinion, they seem to be much more interested in pointing the finger at Runbeck. And so, we're kind of the, you know, the, the guy at the side of the boxing ring, we're gonna have to watch them duke it out a little bit. The only thing that gives me hope is that the Secretary of State is basically holding a fire to their feet, because Hart requires them, if they want to continue to be certified, Runbeck also requires them, if they want to continue to be certified. It's also the case that our contract with Runbeck ends December 31st, and I know that they would very much like to continue to have our business, so they're obviously being as forthcoming as they possibly can in order to remain a viable competitor for that. So I am hopeful that at the end of the day, they will come to see the necessity of reimbursing us.
Do you know how the 58 counties, how many use Runbeck?
I don't know that, no. I know there are counties that use Runbeck, but also use the Dominion machine. Pardon me. Fewer counties use the Hart machine in California.
Right, I know there's only a handful of counties that use the Hart machine. Just from not an expert's side of things, what you've laid out, it just sounds like, it sounds like Runbeck is the guilty party here with the overspray, and if the Hart machine is actually doing its job and picking up any thing that's not correcting the ballot, I mean, that's just from my point of view, which is not an expert, obviously, but, so at least glad that Runbeck is having a conversation, and I'm glad the Secretary of State's holding both parties to the fire to get to the bottom of this and find out what the true problem is, and, you know, looking forward, next election cycle, you don't have to deal with these big issues.
Yes, that's my hope as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if we're ready, we'll take the roll call vote. Start with Supervisor Garment.
Uh, no.
Supervisor Joe.
Yes.
Supervisor Crye.
Yes.
Supervisor Kelstrom?
Yes.
Supervisor Rickert? No.
Passes 3-2.